This time I'll call the regularly scheduled meeting of the Harlingen City Commission to Order, which has been duly posted, and call upon Mr. Mike Mesmore to lead us in an invocation.
In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen. Our Father who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name, thy kingdom come; thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Bois Espasimas.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the fact of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, welcome all of our visitors, visitors to our meeting tonight. We're glad to have you here. And we'll start off with the approval of the minutes of the meeting of June 5th, 2019, and the regular meeting of July 17, 2019. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing now, is there a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
Some move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign.
Please note that Mesmore didn't vote. He wasn't here.
Okay. Item 2A through E. So we voted on that all, yeah. Okay. Minutes are approved. Item 2A through E, the consent agendas, or motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Some move. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item 3, second public hearing to solicit comments from the public for or against the proposed tax rate of 63 cents for $100 in value for fiscal year 2019 through 20. Sergio.
Thank you, Mayor. The item before you is the, was, this is a second public hearing. All legal notices were published for the hearings, as well as the tax rate calculation in the local newspaper. The tax rate being proposed is .63, 63 cents, and it is included in the 2019-2020 budget.
All right. Thank you. So I'll open the public hearing. Anyone who would like to speak for or against the proposed tax rate of 63 cents, please come forward and state your name, your residence address, and you'll have two minutes, have two minutes.
Testing 1, 2, 3. Okay, you're gonna start my two minutes right now. I'm Jay Mead. I live at 427 East Woodland in Harlingen, Texas. And tonight's the night residents get a second chance to speak out about city's plans to raise taxes 4 cents per $100 valuation. I understand from what I've read and doing the math, on a $100,000 home, that's 40 cents, $40 a year. $40 divided by 3.5, by 365 days is 10.9 cents a day. Now, if Harlingen's tax rate was already way up there with some of the other Valley cities, I'd be concerned. However, since we have a very low rate, one of the lowest in the Valley for our size, my concern is not that, not that big on that. 10 cents a day, 10.9 cents a day for a $100,000 home is a small price, price to pay to keep Harlingen a wonderful community and a good investment, in my opinion. Let me say it again. This year's increased revenue from the tax increase will go to drainage improvements. What's wrong with that? That's, we just went through a, one heck of a water rain, and we, there's a lot of folks out there, including me, that have a large building that came that far from being flooded. We couldn't go to work for a day. Okay. The lone commissioner, and by the way, I like that lone commissioner, he's a good guy, but I don't have to agree with his politics, who opposes this rate increase, says, let's take it from the reserves. It was at a meeting in the past that the same commissioner who I served with was wanting to vote to take money from our reserves in order to fund police officer raises. But then, one of our common sense commissioners pointed out to him that this would be fine for this year, we could afford it. But what about next year?
Go ahead and finish your, finish your sentence.
What?
Is that, your time is up.
Oh, wow, that went fast. Okay. Well, anyway, can I conclude? You know, I don't care the way anybody runs, any commissioner runs their business or their personal finances, but this is our city money, and I think rating the reserves is a bad deal. Let's get this 4 cent raise passed and go on about our business because it's for drainage. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Thank you. All right. Anyone else like to speak for or against the proposed tax rate?
Okay, my turn. Hi, guys. Charles Bickley, 125 Arcadia Drive, Harlingen, Texas. It's been brought to my attention, now I have here, and really, I shouldn't be talking to you guys, you already know about this. This is a summation of SC2.
Okay. Mr. Bickley, please, please address the commission, the hearing, the hearing is for the commission.
Can you guys hear me? Yeah, okay. Because this goes to you. The summation says that on January 1, taxes can no longer be elevated more than 3.5% or we get to vote on it. Fact is, that this is the last chance for you guys to take monies out of our pocket until we have to vote on it, or you're gonna be reduced to 3.5%. Now, this is something that's going on throughout the, throughout the state, evidently, we're not the only greedy commissioners in the state. This is going on throughout the whole state to get the last chance to get that 8%. Okay? So with that said, I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak for or against the tax rate?
Steve Jennings. My address is 800 Tam Street in Combs. I have property here in the city. On this tax rate, it seems like it is a little bit premature to get that amount. One of the items that they showed last week was a doubling of the amount to go towards the animal control, Dog Pound, I don't know what y'all, I don't know what the official name is. Does anyone want to address why that, that funding has doubled on that account?
Yeah, so the, this is a public hearing, and so you can state your opinions. If we can't, but Mr. Jennings will have, I'll have one of our assistant city managers answer your question after the meeting.
Okay. Well, when I first started in real estate, getting, getting married, our, our taxes were running 1% of the value of the property per year. You know, now we're up around 2.5 to 3%. You know, the values have gone up and all this. I want us to have good streets and all of this. Streets are not as good in Harlingen as they were when I first came here. Let's just, let's all make very efficient use of the dollars, and if we can reduce this, it would be greatly appreciated by, by me, anyway, and I think some of your people. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jennings. Next, anyone who'd like to speak for or against the tax rate?
Hello, Mayor Commissioners. My name is JV Garcia, 57, 18 Wild Persimmon, Wildwood subdivision. As we all know, we just suffered one of the greatest floods in the history of Harlingen. You know, Mr. Mead, no disrespect, but I don't think the 4 cent tax hike would have been a big deal if it truly was going to drainage, which it's not. You guys are playing with the numbers on that. But if it was truly going to drainage, I think people would be for this, and you would have a majority supporting this. That would be a good thing, but the truth of the matter is not. You know, we have many, many, many residents that are still displaced right now, out of their homes. They're not living in their homes, they're renting, or they're living where they're, with their families. You're raising property taxes on those homes that are vacant, that are getting worked on. Think about that. And your response is just raise taxes and, and, again, let's be clear, Mr. Mr. Bickley just mentioned Senate Bill 2. You're trying to beat the clock. When it goes into effect, January 1, 2020, it would require that we, the people, vote on this 4 cent tax hike. So let's be transparent, let's talk about Senate, Senate Bill 2. The name of Senate Bill 2 is, and it was the, the name given by the authors at the 86th Legislature, Senate Bill 2, the Texas Property Tax Reform and Transparency Act of 2019. You all are doing the opposite of what the very spirit of this bill is. I just want you all to think about that. Please. There are people out there that can't be here because they're with families. This is a very, very touchy, very, very touchy subject. And I know I may, may have been a little aggressive in the past, but I, I just want you all to dig deep and really listen to your hearts. You know, we had a good prayer, the Lord's Prayer. Say that prayer, and think about what you guys are doing. I hope you can change your mind.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else like to speak for or against the tax rate?
Robert Lethwood, 909 East Parkwood, Harlingen, Texas. I just wanted to bring up a couple of things. Last night, or yesterday, I attended the County Commissioners' Court meeting, and drainage priorities were an issue there. They're, they're becoming a priority, and I wanted to point out two things. First of all, there's a public notice from the Water District, number 5, and they are focusing more on drainage as well, but they're not raising their tax rate. The other thing is, the county, even though they're going to reprioritize, they're not raising their tax rate. So I don't understand, coupled with the fact that the last two or three budget years, we've had a similar expense for drainage, and we didn't raise taxes in the city of Harlingen to cover those same things. We're not spending an extraordinary amount of money this year, as y'all are indicating, to suffice even dipping, dipping into the budget or the fund balance to cover this. And the fact of this is that, we talked about sales tax funding. I want to talk about some other funding options. You know, the, the sales tax numbers came in for June, they were up 5% for the city of Harlingen. The fact is, is that that flood occurred late in the month, so the, for the, so the flood repair spending's not gonna occur until July going forward. So we're gonna see not only the, a normal increase in the sales tax, we're gonna see some increase from the flood spending. So that's another funding source. The fact is, is that on the comprehensive plans, priority goals that the city puts in the budget, the number one priority listed in last year's budget was the convention center, and it shows funding 4B, TERS, 1, 2, 3, hotel occupancy, potential funding sources, $14,846,000. Baxter Building, number two priority, 1.53, 1.5 million dollars, potential funding sources, 4B, general fund. The fact is, is that we just seen an article about a $4.4 million sale of the city's economic, the EDC building, $4.4 million going into their fund. Why can't this money be used? We don't need to dip into the, to the, to the general fund to do that. We have TERS, the TERS monies for 2015, 2016.
Your time is up. Thank you.
You've got almost, we've got three TERS in the city of Harlingen that had, two years ago, almost $2 million in there. This money is for drainage, and it's identified for the convention center as possible funding. Why can't, and-
Your, your time is up.
All right. Let me just make one more point. The fact is, is that the budget showed the convention center priority 1, the Baxter Building priority 2. Guess what the drainage projects were? Priority 7. We already had a catastrophic flood in 2018. Why, why was the drainage that far down in the priority for the city?
All right.
The fact is-
Thank you.
If you don't understand the budget, and you're just gonna vote to go along to get along-
Thank you.
You guys need to think about stepping out and let the voters vote for somebody who will represent the citizens.
All right. Mr. Lethwood, it's time, your time for you, your time is up. Anyone else like to speak for or against? Anyone else would like to speak for or against?
I just want to add something to my, I still had some time left. I'd like to, to thank Frank Puentez for his courage to voting against it, and you guys should have the courage to do it, too.
Is there anyone, is there anyone else, is there anyone else who'd like to speak for or against the tax rate? Please step up to the podium and state your name and your residence address.
Mayor, Ron Losonoff, 2410 Riverside Drive. A critical factor here is what others have mentioned about a rush to judgment approach you take. Throughout all of your tenures, you've seen amendments to budget at all times of the fiscal year. So regardless of how you may be suggesting to us in the next three, year and a half weeks, we've gotta do it now. You know, as mature adults, and getting into this heat of the kitchen, that you guys continually transfer and amend items. So don't put that ruse on us, because ballots are being printed right now for our brave military. Yes, there are people serving across the world in federal law mandates that they get an opportunity in the election everybody's talking about, whereby, most pundits do concur that we're gonna get an opportunity to vote up or down on any hike of the kind you propose. So it's hard to use any other term other than you're being twisted, because you're not sympathetic, a couple of y'all, to demo, a small D, democracy characteristics. So again, I would urge you to at least think of the military, because they are important, and they should have a voice on this type of thing. We're only seven weeks away from early voting on this particular matter. This is, we're not talking about a huge delay. So stick to basics like police sewage streets. Don't do the market capitalism of Bass Pro, reverse osmosis, 25 million there, Frontier American. You entice people with our money, and you just frankly don't care. And reserves were meant for that 500 year that you're talking about. Well, the 500 year occurred, so use the reserves. You want the cake and eat it too, you're gonna say, oh, it's the flood's fault. No, it's your fault. It's your fault. You don't use the reserves. Thank you very much.
All right. Anyone else like, anyone else who'd like to speak for or against the tax rate?
Francisco Medrano, Jr., 1217 Court Place, Harlingen, Texas. I just want to tell you guys how much I love Harlingen.
Is that your residence address?
Yeah, that's my residence. I'm leasing there. Yeah. Okay. Is that clear?
Go ahead.
Okay. I just want to express to this commission how much I love the city of Harlingen. I wouldn't be where I'm at if it wasn't for the city of Harlingen. I come from San Perlita. I was lucky enough that there was a technical college here to, to afford somebody like me to be able to get an education and continue. I've worked as a telemarketer here, I've worked as a janitor here, I've worked as your, in your concession stand, and to me, this, this city means a lot to me. It's not just another town that I stay in or I work at, or that I lease an apartment at. And I want to go on record that I'm against the tax hike. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak for or against the tax rate? Is there anyone else? I'm gonna close the public hearing. Thank you for going to the next agenda item, which is item 4, presentation by Ford Kinsley, President of the Keep Harlingen Beautiful Board of Directors and Possible Action to Approve the Keep Harlingen Beautiful Budget for Fiscal Year 2019-20. Mr. Kinsley.
Afternoon, everybody. I'm back for another year with the budget for Keep Harlingen Beautiful. We are confident that the budget as presented here today will carry us through for our annual National Mega Difference Day, our Two Litter Bashes, our Electronic Waste Recycle Event, our other day event, and for any other special projects that you deem necessary for us. So I ask approval of our 2019-2020 budget, as hopefully you all have a copy of.
We have a, we have a copy? Does anybody have any questions about the Keep Harlingen Beautiful budget? Is there a motion to approve the budget?
Some move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign. Ford, I want to thank you for your leadership to Keep Harlingen Beautiful, and all of your board members, all the volunteers that work so hard to Keep Harlingen Beautiful. We appreciate the work that y'all do. Thank you.
Yes, sir. We've got our labor force back, school's starting, so we'll be back out there.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Item 5, consideration of possible action to approve the acceptance of the Texas State Library and Archives Commission Texas Treasures Grant in the amount of $24,990.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioner, City Manager. The Texas State Library and Archives Commission has awarded the Harlingen Public Library the Texas Treasures Grant in the amount of $24,990. No matching funds are required with this grant. With this grant, the library will digitize the Valley Morning Star from August 1981 until September 1995. The Harlingen Public Library will then hold digitized copies of the Valley Morning Star from 1926 until September 1995. These digitized copies are available through the library's website. This project began in 20, I believe in 2013, and includes copies of the Valley Morning Star, the Valley Sunday Star, Monitor Herald, the Valley, the Harlingen Star, Valley Weekly, Valley Weekly Star, the Star Farmer, and the Rio Grande Farmer. This is an important part of our Valley history, and staff recommends approval. Thank you for your consideration.
All right. Anybody have any questions?
Just a comment, I just think it's wonderful that we can get a grant like that to preserve history. So I want to thank the library for going out there-
Not only that, but the grant application was ranked so highly among so many other pretty important library institutions in the state. I was very proud of how highly ranked our application was. Congratulations to you-
Thank you, sir.
-and your staff for doing such a great job on that. Is there a motion to approve the acceptance of the grant?
Some move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you again. Item 6, consideration of possible action to authorize the mayor on behalf of the city of Harlingen to accept STEP grant funding in the amount of $56,369.22 made available through the Texas Department of Transportation, Tech dot comprehensive program. Chief.
Mayor Commissioners, this is a grant that renews every year. It's, does have matching funds on this one, with Tech Stop providing $45,000, and we will match with a little over $11,000 to make up the, the total. It's a, this is the comprehensive grant, which targets reductions for fatal and serious accidents. So we target the, the traffic enforcement around those areas and for those types of events. It's a, it's a personnel-
Anybody have any questions for the chief? Is there a motion to accept the grant?
Some move.
Some move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item 7, consideration of possible action to authorize the mayor on behalf of the city of Harlingen to accept STEP grant funding in the amount of $15,162.56 made available through the Texas Department of Transportation Commercial Motor Vehicle Program.
Again, this one's through Tech Stop. It's for commercial motor vehicle enforcement, so specifically have units enforcing those laws on the commercial motor vehicles and it's for salaries and also, so similar type thing with a, a match of a little over $3,000 on this one.
Motion to accept the grant?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Chief, thank you and your staff for always working hard to try to get some extra funding for us. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Item 8, consideration and possible action to authorize the mayor on behalf of the city of Harlingen to approve and sign the interlocal agreement with our HCISD for Harlingen Police Department to staff police officers and school resource officers. Chief.
Again, this one is the interlocal agreement with the school district for the school resource officers that are there. This is an agreement for this school year, and basically, the school pays for the officers that are there. We're also working on increasing the amount where the school's gonna cover the, the officers 100%. Hopefully, next year that'll take place for the entire year, calendar year, not just the school year, and allow us to better support them in the endeavors. The school board has already reviewed this interlocal agreement, and they approved it on the 13th of this month.
The motion for approval.
Motion?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign. This is a great partnership that we have between the city and the school district, and I think it works well to really keep our city and our, and our kids safe, and we appreciate your implementation of this program, chief. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 9, consideration of possible action to grant variance regards to sidewalk required on Treasure Hills Boulevard for the proposed replat of Ernst &amp; Drake Estates subdivision varying legal description of .56 acre replat comprised of .29 acre tract out of Lot 19, Block 1, Treasure Hills subdivision, unit number 9, and a 2.27 acre tract out of Lot 1. Block 1, Treasure Hills Country Club subdivision, blocks 1, 2, 3, and 4, located on north side of Treasure Hills Boulevard, east of La Cerrada Boulevard.
Mayor City Commission, good afternoon. First of all, my name is Javier Cervantes. I'm the new planning director. I've met some of you already. This is a property on Treasure Hills subdivision, it's a replat of two existing lots, and basically, what's happening is the property owner is moving a lot line, he's the same owner for the two lots, and he's just moving a lot line here. So it's a, it's a replat of an existing subdivision. That's what the replat would look like, it's just, like I said, moving the lot line between the two lots. This is the location, as you can see, this is already developed, this portion of Treasure Hills subdivision is fully developed. We have, we did an inventory of sidewalks in, in the area. The variances for the sidewalk requirements for the two lot subdivision, between P Street and Hain Drive, over here, on the southeast corner, there's, you already have sidewalks all along here, and on the northwest side, you have about 50% of the sidewalks. In this section of Treasure Hills subdivision, it's already, like I mentioned earlier, it's already developed, and there are no sidewalks. And then over here, you have a brand new subdivision that will have sidewalks when they build the houses. There's a, noting the plaque that would require sidewalks. But this location is right in the middle of an area that has no sidewalks at all. The, that's the location of the property, looking from the west, same property, and looking from the east. Staff recommended denial to the variance request. Staff sees an opportunity to obtain escrows for sidewalk improvements. If the city produces a sidewalk project there, we will have escrows in place for the, for those two lots. The applicant is requesting a variance, like I said, for those two lots, they're existing lots, and it's a, it's a built-out area. There are no other sidewalks to connect to, and the developer is saying that the sidewalks have no purpose, and the escrow funds is not feasible. The Planning and Sonny Commissioner, Commissioner Lowry stated that it seems like a undue burden to provide sidewalks for the two lots, since the applicant is basically correcting a lot issue to the replating process. Chairman Peacock stated that he likes the idea of the new subdivisions having to require this. However, the surrounding area does not have any sidewalks, and it's not very feasible. In conclusion, the Planning and Sonny Commission recommended the variance request unanimously.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
Yes. Mine's gonna be more of a statement than a question. Turn this thing off. I'm sorry. I, I wanted to point out what he pointed out, in that there was an option for them to create an escrow. I understand not putting a sidewalk in, but basically, the commission had the opportunity at that point to require an escrow be put, and that Commissioner Lowry, even though they were told that financial could not be an option, went ahead and said, well, I think it's an undue burden for us to collect an escrow. And so what it's gonna take, it'll take four or five of us to vote this against. I, I think we should have an escrow at least established for it. I, I agree that a sidewalk is not feasible, sidewalk going nowhere is not a right thing to do, but we should at least not set a precedence of not requiring that if you're going to replat a piece of property, is not have sidewalks, that we don't at least take down an escrow. Because at some point in time, when we have to redo that street, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, we may be forced as a city to have to put sidewalks in. And so I just think the escrow method is something that we should not abandon, and by doing this, we set a precedence.
I happen to agree, to disagree with your point. I mean, this is a sidewalk to nowhere. And how long would money be held in escrow? Tens of years, twenties, 20 years? I don't know. I don't know.
My issue with it is, is, I use, in my, in my district on, on the loop, you know, for a long time, the loop was stagnant, and then you'd have somebody come in, and there was a variance, and there was a variance, and now you have no sidewalks. Now, now, the loop has really developed, so, and you, and we implemented some and not others. So, now you have sidewalk, then you have a void, then you have a sidewalk, and we would stay consistent however it is, whether you're gonna make them do it or not do it. If we would've stayed with, with, with the ordinance, then they would've, we would've had a whole sidewalk. So, and I, that's why I look at it as far as the future.
This, this street is roughly 40 years old, and those houses have been on there 35 to 40 years.
Oh, I see.
I mean, you can't unscramble an egg. This city commissioning zoning 40 years ago should've required sidewalks.
Thank God I wasn't here then.
Yeah, first term.
All right. Um, I don't know, any other questions or comments? Or, obviously, it's a difficult.
Just wanted to make my statement that way.
It's a difficult.
Yes, it is difficult.
It's, it's, you know, it's, I wanna, I wanna compliment the, the planning director on the, on the presentation. I think that was very, uh, like, like the format, gives us the highlights from the P&amp;Z meeting minutes. I think that's very helpful, also to have the staff's recommendation up there as you go through it. I thought it was very, very helpful explanation.
And we, we have seen, Mayor, Commissioner, we have seen more and more of these variance requests for sidewalks, and so, as Javier came on board, uh, he brought to me a suggestion that we're probably gonna bring back to the city council, uh, at the first meeting of September for consideration, um, regarding sidewalks. Uh, but we can't go into it today, but, uh, but we, it's something we are looking at so that we can try to be a little more equitable in how these developments occur.
My question is, is, we've, we've been real aggressive about going after TechStop funding for sidewalks.
For sidewalks.
And so, we've done enormous, we've done a lot of miles of new sidewalk. Is there any chance that this stretch of Treasure Hills would, uh, at some point become eligible for, uh, is it, would it be feasible to, to put sidewalks in there? You know, we have a, uh, sidewalks to schools program. You wanna explain that?
The, the, this area is part of the Safe Route to School program, where it calls for sidewalks, uh, within a two-mile radius of elementary schools all the way up to middle schools. So, this is part of that plan, uh, this area. So, potentially, it could qualify for Transportation Alternative Program through TechStop for funding. Uh, we have not submitted this particular area for that funding source just yet, but something we could consider in the future. And, and we are gonna do, like the mayor pointed out, quite a few miles' worth of sidewalks through that funding source in the near future. So, we're just waiting on the advanced funding agreements from TechStop.
Would it be out of line to table this until after that meeting? Or do we go ahead and move forward with this as, as presented?
The P&amp;Z has taken action already. Uh, it, we have to take action at this level.
Okay.
And the recommendation is?
They're, they're.
To approve the variance.
They approve the variance, so what Commissioner Lowry was pointing out is to, well.
What I was pointing out, if we vote, if we vote to not allow the variance, it would take four or five of us to say, "We're not gonna allow that variance," and therefore, that resident, the, the, the vote would be, the motion would state something like, uh, to deny it, and the only way they could go forward is to develop the, the escrow fund.
How many feet of sidewalk is this altogether?
It's about 200 feet.
102.
About 150 feet.
So, it's the staff that's, that's.
Staff said to not allow the variance. P&amp;Z voted, not with staff, but.
Staff thinks they are.
And my concern was that their vote was based on dollars, not based on, "It's just not right."
And the estimate is 4,600 approximately.
So, if, so if, for example, we were, we, we did end up getting a grant for the safe, uh, safe route, what is it? Sidewalks?
Safed to school.
Safe routes to schools, we'd have to build, then, then we'd have to build this 150 feet ourselves.
Yes.
And, uh, that would be, you know, obviously, if they, if the developer built it, then we, there would be that much less sidewalk we would have to build if we, you know. But if we're not gonna do it, I don't wanna, I was just pointing that out. That's not really something we, we're thinking about doing, but if it's something we might, might be able to do, then it'd be good if everybody participated in building the sidewalk.
And at the point that we overlay or pave that road, it may trigger the need for a sidewalk as well.
Okay. So, what's, what are the wishes of the commissions? Might need to move to?
I'll make a motion to, uh, on number nine here, to grant the variance.
Grant, okay. Got the motion? Uh, is there a motion? Is there a second?
To grant the variance.
To grant, to grant the variance. Okay, here.
Wait, hold on. I think he's trying to ask a question. What's the question?
I'm trying to figure out. Okay, so, we're going against staff recommendation and creating?
Well, so, no.
That's his motion.
My, so Commissioner Mesmar's motion is to dis, is to, uh, not accept the staff's recommendation.
And wait.
And to accept the P&amp;Z's recommendation.
Okay. Second.
So, you're gonna second. All right. Is there, uh, okay, so, is, we have motion and second. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
One.
Opposed.
Okay.
Opposed.
So, that motion.
Oh, you vote no also?
People voted no also.
So, that motion fails.
Okay, so.
The P&amp;Z vote carries, right?
Yeah.
So, we don't have a four-face vote, so the P&amp;Z vote says.
No, we don't have, you didn't have, you didn't, the motion failed.
Somebody else could try to make a motion to.
Okay, so, this will be my motion. My motion is to not accept the variance that the P&amp;Z recommended, and, but to allow the, the developer to put a 46, is that what it was? The 4,600 was the escrow amount?
Escrow amount.
To allow them to put the 4,600 escrow, and in lieu of having to build a sidewalk, they just put the escrow amount there. Now, here's one question I have about the escrow, and I agree with Mesmar. That escrow's there, it's escrow. That escrow belongs to the homeowner. If they sell the property, what happens to the money?
It stays, stays with the city.
But it's an escrow.
It's an escrow for that purpose only.
For that purpose only. And if we get a grant, is, does it, does it get used or get reverted back to the homeowner, the property owner?
It's, it's used for that.
It's used for the purpose of building the sidewalk at the point we put a sidewalk. Okay. So, I wanna make sure that we're all clear in what we're voting on.
And then, if there's a long enough period, then it would go back to developer, right?
No, it stays with us.
It stays.
It stays unless we decide we're not gonna build a sidewalk ever.
So, that was a, so that was a motion with a question.
But I just wanna make sure that everybody's clear there.
Motion, we need a second.
Motion is to put the 4,600 escrow.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay.
That's four.
Motion carries.
I voted no.
Right.
Again, those against? All those against?
Against.
Okay. All right. Item 10, consideration of possible action to approve a resolution to collect 50% of the bingo prize fees from local licensed organizations conducting bingo within the city of Harlingen in accordance with the House Bill 914. Okay?
Mayor, who's Commissioner, City Manager, this item is for the collection of the bingo prize fee that the city currently receives. Uh, House Bill 914 will change the way that's done. Uh, currently, the bingo organizations that have bingo remit that fee to the state on a quarterly basis, uh, and the Texas Lottery Commission gives the city a check at the end of the year. Uh, House Bill 914 will change that. Now, uh, if the city wants to continue to receive that, we have to pass this resolution stating that we want to continue to receive that fee. We then have to notify the, the Lottery Commission before November 1st that we want to receive that fee, and we have to notify the, uh, three organizations that currently collect that fee that they will have to remit that directly to the city in 2020. Uh, currently, it's the Ochs Lodge 1889, the VFW Post 2410, and Bingo Ranch Harlingen Unit that conduct bingo within the city. In 2017, that fee was about $5,000, a little less than $5,000. In 2018, it was $13,400. So, staff recommends approval of the resolution so we can continue to receive that.
Okay, so, so nothing, in reality, nothing has changed, other than.
Just the way we collect.
The state government passed a new law saying we have to agree to it.
Well, no. Uh, now, the, uh, the nonprofits will actually remit their payment to us on a quarterly basis.
And not to the Lottery Commission?
Not to the Lottery Commission, no.
And that's, that's the only change?
That's really the only change, yes.
And then, how do we know that they're sending us the correct amount of money?
Well, we know who they are, so if we don't receive, uh, a fee from them on a quarterly basis, or if that fee, uh, drops down, we'll have to have some sort of audit of their records to make sure that they're collecting the, the 5%.
Okay, and that's allowed by this, uh, new bill from Texas?
Uh, House Bill 914?
Yes.
Well, my thing is, an audit usually costs money, and we have to pay for that.
Correct.
So, depending on how much, uh, loss in revenue, then you'd have to consider the option of doing an audit or just collecting the revenue.
Okay, so the state's removing itself as the middleman.
Yes, exactly.
Yep. That's right. Is there a motion, motion to approve the resolution?
Second.
No motion and a second, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item 11, consideration of possible action to approve a resolution accepting Harlingen Waterworks Systems budget for fiscal year 2019.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager. I'm, uh, it's my pleasure to present the fiscal year 2020 budget for Harlingen Waterworks System. It was adopted by the Board of Trustees on July 31st of this year. Outlined in my presentation, I'd like to focus mostly on capital improvement projects, talk a little bit about operational initiatives and expense changes relative to the fiscal year 2019 budget, go over some, uh, the working capital schedule. You've got a number of schedules in your packet. I just wanna cover one of those that talks about our balance sheet, and then talk, just briefly, about future budget forecasts and where we're headed. Uh, starting off with capital improvement projects, uh, one, the only one I want to mention from fiscal year 2019 is a 20-inch water main that we constructed from Hand Road all the way to Loop 499. Uh, this had immediate benefits in improving circulation between the west side and the central part of town. Uh, we've seen water age go down. Our disinfection residuals have stayed up, meaning our water quality has, has come to a better level because of this project. And an upshot of this is that, unlike the past two years where we have undertaken a change in disinfection, we're going to forego that this year because our conditions in, in the water system remain, uh, at a, at a high level. We'll probably look at that next summer, but this project has been a big benefit to us. 1.9 million, we only spent about $67,000 at the end of, or at the beginning of this current fiscal year. Uh, just wanted to draw some attention to that. A number of other projects, these are the highest spending projects we had in fiscal year 2019, and none of these are over $400,000. So, our estimated expenditures for the current fiscal year, 1.7 million, and we had budgeted 6.9. And a lot of this is coming from the fact that we were preparing to get some really large projects ready to go, and we'll talk about that when we get to the 2020. So, through the conversion of some agricultural land to residential or urban use, we have the opportunity to purchase approximately 300 acre feet of water rights. Uh, we did a purchase of a similar amount back at the end of 2017, proposing to do the same thing with the recently converted land over the past couple of years. Uh, the rate that we're paying is discounted, uh, and it is now $1,970 per acre foot. Uh, that's a 20% increase over a couple of years ago. We thought maybe we'd save up a few and save on the legal costs of purchasing the land, but at that kind of rate increase, we might need to do it every year. Uh, I wanna talk about a program, and, and not all of this is in the, the next fiscal year. Asbestos cement pipeline replacement, uh, back in the late, in the mid-'50s to mid-'70s, a lightweight economical pipe was asbestos cement, and, uh, about a third of our system was installed, uh, with that type of pipe. It was good for a while, but, uh, of the 255 main breaks that we average per year, most of those are in asbestos cement. And this is a heat map that was generated from the breaks that we experienced from 2015 through 17. And we identified this area here, which is, uh, an older portion of Treasure Hills and a portion up here in Pendleton Place, as good candidates, so we proceeded in prior, in the current year budget to undertake some design for those projects. Uh, Treasure Hills, 3.3 miles of replacement of pipe there within those subdivisions, and you can see the different years they were built. And we're also including in that a stretch along Hain Drive, about 100, about 1,000 feet beyond the Treasure Hills Elementary. The city's preparing to do some work to refurbish that road coming up next summer. Uh, with this project, we should be out of there well in advance of the city's project. We hired a consultant to help us with the design. That's now completed, and in the next month or so, we're gonna bid this project out. Estimated construction cost, $5 million. It's using a pipe bursting process that you dig some pits a few hundred feet apart, pneumatic hammer breaks the pipe, and drags a brand-new pipe in behind it. So, it's, it's less invasive than an open cut, particularly in a lot of these alleys where you've got gas lines, cables. You don't have to find a new corridor. You're putting a new pipe right exactly where the old pipe used to be. Uh, and it's going to be a lower cost than if we were to try an open-cut approach. Um, so, that's a, a big project. Another, the Pendleton Place water line replacement, 4.6 miles. Uh, we've, we've learned that we can design this in-house, so, I'm sorry. No cost there. Um, the last cost estimate we had about a year ago, 4.7 million, could be a little bit higher. Uh, so, I, I wanted to talk about, uh, actually, let me go back here. Pendleton Place is not budgeted for 2020. It would be a '21 project or possibly a year later. Uh, and I mention these because, uh, the issue of infrastructure that's old and aging and where we have so many breaks, if, at the cost rate we just talked about, about $1 to $1.5 million per mile to replace that pipe, we have 150 miles. Even at the low end, that's a lot of money. If we took half of our typical CIP spending in a year and dedicated it to asbestos cement pipeline replacement, it still would take us over 50 years to remove this kind of problematic pipe from our system. So, I just wanted to highlight a problem and a challenge that a lot of communities are gonna be facing. Asbestos cement pipe isn't just a Harlingen problem. Public infrastructure across the country are facing some challenges, and we're gonna see it in this type of example. Uh, moving on to another project we'd budgeted in fiscal year 2019, Industrial Park Sewer Trunk, which extends a relatively large 18 to 24-inch line from our main interceptor running on Gobob Uker to the west side of the canal. Our wastewater plant is just to the south of that. Um, we're gonna design this in-house, build it in-house, uh, thinking that's gonna cost $350,000. And that will open up, provide a lot of additional capacity to the industrial park in areas to the east. We had a water audit completed about a year ago, and it identified a number of issues that we're starting to work on. One of those is meters that are older than 15 years. They significantly under-report to the tune of about $4. The cost for underreporting is $4 per thousand. Our non-revenue water is about 18%. That means we produce 18% more water than we bill for, and we think that that number can come down, and for, on a 4 billion gallon a year basis, that could represent a significant amount of money, so we wanna start addressing that. Uh, as a matter of fact, this year, we have undertaken the replacement of 5,000 to 6,000 smaller residential meters, and we've been upgrading those. We'll spend about $310,000. We're gonna continue that in 20, in fiscal year 2020, dealing with some of the larger sizes, uh, also starting to address some of the large meter installations that are 3-inch and larger. Wholesale customers, big industrial consumers. And we're gonna actually place these here on, on AMI systems, so we'll get 15-minute data. And so, if something starts going wrong, we'll have some triggers to say, is, is consumption going abnormally high or abnormally low? Uh, these are big, uh, big accounts. We have a total of 40 of those. We're going to take a stab at 10 of those installations this year. The background shows a substandard installation, a lot of them need some upgrading. $250,000 there, and $300,000 on the small meters. We also have a dewatering facility at our wastewater plant. All of you are aware that we completed a major upgrade at the 54th Street Wastewater Plant back in 2017. The part of that that wasn't brought up to a full 10 million gallon per day capacity was the dewatering facility. We've got an older press, we'd like to replace that, add a redundant press. That's a cost of $1.5 million. We're already in design on that project, and we'll be ready to start construction sometime in 2020. So those projects and a number of others, we are proposing a $10.345 million capital improvement budget for fiscal year 2020. And that may still be a little bit optimistic, but we've done a lot of the groundwork to get these projects underway on this coming year. If we look at the two-year average, that's about $6 million a year, and that's very close to where we historically have been on an annual basis. Move on to operational initiatives and expense changes. Personnel costs at $456,000 increase. There are two positions that we're proposing to add here, an Assistant General Manager to give some backup for administrative responsibilities, also some succession planning. It's my intent that this individual would be an engineer, and I would want the majority of that individual's time to be dedicated to the engineering of capital improvement projects so we can execute them at a faster rate than we did this current year. A clerk in wastewater, we've needed. We've repurposed some existing operational folks to do some manhole inspections, condition assessment, survey. We need to replace that and provide some additional help there. The others are similar to what you've seen with other city budgets. We have a 4% merit adjustment, and that's in lieu of a 2% COLA and a 2% merit. And we've just implemented a new performance evaluation process. What we feel, sometimes we have employees who aren't meeting the minimum standard that we would like, and if we take all of our adjustments into the merit component, we have the opportunity to send motivational signals through pay adjustments in that process, from a cost standpoint, identical to what the city has proposed. Our board approved that and preferred that approach, so. 4% health increase, very simply, exactly the same as what the city is seeing. From a contractual supplies and maintenance standpoint, our budget is flat. $2,000 change there, but essentially the same as we had in the 2019 budget. We're implementing a computerized maintenance management system, that process will continue, and that's going to yield some really positive benefits, tracking the cost we spend on our assets to inform future decisions in a more comprehensive way than we've done in the past. We're really excited about that. And then a conveyance master plan. Last year, 364 days ago, I presented some of the details of that, and I think many of you heard that a couple of months ago. The primary goal coming out of that master plan is a 10- to 20-year capital improvement plan to address not only capacity projects where we need additional hydraulic capacity, to address existing deficiencies, but also future growth. The second element there is rehab and replacement of projects to renew failing assets. It's exactly what we talked about with the Treasure Hills and Pendleton Place issue, but not just on water line, the comprehensive look. Where we are there, most of that's based on staff knowledge. Once we have this computerized maintenance management system, we're going to collect the kind of data to do some real analytical, I'm sorry, some real analytical tools to address that. So in summary, the master plan is going to give us an integrated capital improvement program that is prioritized by project. It won't address the schedule. It lays the foundation for a number of things that we'll be talking about over the next few years, including future budgets, restatement, recalculation of impact fees that need to be adopted every five years, a rate study, bond ratings, bond issues, and even rate adjustments that will ultimately be needed. Our budget for this project is $450,000. We actually have a contract that's been started, and it's now underway. We expect this to be completed about a year from now. When that's completed, we won't have an idea of what the schedule will be, and we think that in fiscal year 2021, it would be appropriate to undertake a rate study to make sure we're charging the right kind of customers, the right percentage of our cost. But the other element of that is deciding how fast we want to build the projects in the master plan. And I think that's going to be a collaborative effort between the Board of Trustees and this commission, and it will have an impact on what our future rates may end up being. Working capital schedule, this is just a recap of the first budget schedule you have in your packet. I'll run through these quickly. We're down a little bit this year, 3%, 4%, maybe 5% on our water and wastewater. We winter average our wastewater rate for December through February, and that rate applies for the next 12 months. So we had a wet winter, cool winter this past year. That's going to continue affecting our budget for five months into the next fiscal year. We talked about the increases in personnel, $456,000 overall, $458 on our overall operating expenses. We talked about capital projects already. We're going to buy a Vector truck that helps us to clean out any of our backups that happen. It's a really important part of making sure our customers are as happy as they possibly can be. We have two trucks, one of them is failing, and we're going to replace that, and that's a huge chunk of our overall capital asset, equipment budget. For bond proceeds, we, in this fiscal year, have exhausted all of the 2015 bond issue, and so there will be none remaining for fiscal year 2020. We will be applying some of the restricted revenues we've gotten from our water and wastewater impact fees. The $600,000 that you're seeing here on water will go toward paying for our water rights, and the $850,000 that we're pulling out of our $1.4 million balance for wastewater will go to the dewatering project at the wastewater treatment plant. And then finally, we're going to end fiscal year 2019 somewhere around a $25 million working capital balance. In this coming year, we're going to be taking about $7.4 million out of that and ending with a balance of about $18 million. And so that is a trend that will continue without any additional bond revenues or additional revenue that we might, we might need to receive. So future budget forecast, and I don't want to spend much time here, but this is a graph over the last 11 years of our water sales. And you can see that despite 1% growth in our water meter accounts, we have more customers than we had 11 years ago. That red line represents either a linear or an exponential curve fit, and that's a 0% increase in our water consumption over that period. And there's a lot of noise because it does vary from year to year with the weather conditions, but it highlights the point that our gallon per capita consumption is actually going down slightly. And so that becomes a challenge when customers use less water. Conservation is a good thing, but it comes at an impact that you're not going to get the same kind of revenue that you used to get per customer. This is a forecast, and it's very busy, but it's built exactly off the working capital summary. You have the revenues up at the top, which are only increasing by the additional customers. We have a base rate. That will be some increase in revenue, but for the most part, that's just remaining flat over this six-year picture. This is a snapshot, this is not what's actually going to happen, but it's a scenario. I do want to point out here that we think it's appropriate to look at another bond issue at the start of fiscal year 2021, so that would be coming up. Another $12 million issue, similar to what we did back in 2015, and that starts to help mitigate some of the reduction in our working capital balance. And what I've done here is I've assumed a $7 million with a 2.5% escalation going forward on capital improvement projects. That's the main lever that we have control of to determine what our bottom-line capital is going to be. We spend less, we keep more in capital, we spend more, that number goes down more quickly. And so what we can see, as time marches on, there will be some additional revenue requirements, and we'll talk about that at the appropriate time. But that wraps up my presentation on the budget. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you for listening.
Yes, so the punchline is, is you have enough capital and monthly income to meet your proposed budget of $10 million and change?
We have a, well, the proposed spending is...
Yeah, spending of...
We will meet that. We're going to reduce our bottom line by about $7.4 million, but we're still going to end up with an $18 million bottom line.
Okay, and then, just going in my head, adding up pipe replacement and everything else, so you would need another $180 million to make everything pretty much great?
Over a period of time, yes.
Yeah, okay.
All right, does anybody have any other questions for? All right, is there a motion to approve the proposed budget for the Waterworks?
Sub move.
Second.
Any other, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All those opposed, motion carries. Tim, thank you and your, for your leadership and your staff over there, and your board member leadership for, and all they do to really have one of the finest waterworks and wastewater systems in any place. And so I congratulate you on all the work. And, you know, this was almost as thorough as Darrell's presentations used to be. You do not need to aspire to be as thorough as Darrell. It was a very thorough, good presentation. We appreciate it. Thank you.
I do appreciate your support, thank you.
Item 12, consideration possible action to approve a memorandum agreement between the City of Harlingen and Research Applied Technology Education Service. Rates, DBA rates, RGV, representative appointment to Lower Grand Valley, TPDES Stormwater Task Force. Carlos?
Mayor, Commissioners, good afternoon. The Stormwater Task Force is an organization that's comprised of 27 municipalities, counties, and one irrigation district throughout the Cameron, Hidalgo, and Willacy County areas. The task force collectively participates in addressing stormwater issues, watershed, and non-point source pollution management issues that benefit, I mean, all the parties involved, really, and not just the members. Some of these, some of these issues have to do with the Texas Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Stormwater Permit. For short, many of us recognize or know it as a stormwater permit that's issued through TCQ, which then administers the EPA's Clean Water Act. And so the agreement before you is to provide for the city to be a participant in this Stormwater Task Force. It does require or request from the City Commission to appoint a representative on the task force, and staff is recommending approval of the agreement, and also to designate Javier Cervantes, our Planning Director, to represent the City of Harlingen in this endeavor.
Does this cost anything?
Yes, that's a very important part, sorry.
That's the new guy, right?
Uh, yes, sir. The, there is a participant.
Welcome on board.
Thank you. The, there is a annual fee that's involved, the first year, as noted on your packet, is $14 million. No, $14,000?
No, no, no.
No, it's not.
Code.
$14,000 for the initial year, and $17,000 for the second year through the fifth year. This is a five-year period agreement.
You made me panic attack.
Sorry.
Okay, is there, is there a motion to approve the memorandum agreement?
Sub move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item 13, consideration possible action to approve memorandum agreement between the City of Harlingen and Research Applied Technology Education Service. Rates, DBA rates, RGV for preparation of Texas Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Stormwater Permit Application and Stormwater Plan. Carlos?
Yes, sir. Mayor, Commissioners, again, this is kind of like a follow-up to the previous item that we have. The City of Harlingen is required to submit a permit to TCQ, again, managing the Stormwater Clean Water Act for EPA. The agreement here provides for rates, RGV, which again is the overseer of the Stormwater Task Force, to prepare the, submit a, of the application on the permit, and primarily to help us develop and implement and carry on the stormwater management program. There is a fee involved, a one-time fee of $5,000 for this service. Staff is recommending approval.
It's a motion for approval.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, the motion carries. Thank you. Carlos, 14. Consideration possible action to adopt a resolution in support of the United States Army Corps of Engineers' proposed, submit a proposed study entitled Lower Grand Valley Flood Risk Management and Resilience Project to the United States Congress under Section 7001 of the Water Resources Reform and Development Act of 2014. Carlos?
Yes, Mayor, Commissioners, again, this is another item that is part of our participation with the Stormwater Task Force. We have access to and are requested to support. The Lower Rio Grande Valley Development Council, Regional Waters Resource Advisory Council, is requesting, or is going to petition, the United States Army Corps of Engineers to solicit from Congress to put this study, or funding for this study, a regional study in the, in their congressional allocation for next, for next year. The study, again, is the, it's meant for a regional hydraulic and hydrologic watershed study to include the areas of the Cameron County, Hidalgo, and Willacy County. The resolution in support is for, again, to petition the US Army Corps of Engineers to submit this request to Congress. Staff is recommending approval.
Motion to approve.
Is there a motion to adopt the resolution? Motion, second. Any other discussion?
Can we vote by saying hallelujah?
Obviously, this is a good, very good project, greatly needed.
Right.
You voted hallelujah. All those in favor say.
Ah, hallelujah.
Those opposed, motion carries. Item 15, consideration possible action to approve revisions to the three-party interlocal agreement between the City of Harlingen, Harlingen Irrigation District Number 1, and Cameron County Drainage District Number 5, to collaborate in the project to approve the conveyance of stormwater along Willacy Land Drain. Carlos?
Mayor, Commissioners, this is, both items 15 and 16 is a little bit of clarification, cleanup for the agreements that were brought to you, were brought before you last, at the last meeting. Again, this is a interlocal agreement between the Drainage District and, Drainage District Number 5, and Irrigation District Number 1, and Harlingen Irrigation District. The Irrigation District requested that some items be clarified as far as the responsibilities, mainly having to do with traffic control, while we're doing work on roadways or crossings, having to do with, having to do with the pavement restoration, the hauling of some of the excavated materials, and so forth. There is no increase, there's no increase to the, to the project or to the responsibility of the city, how much we are budgeting for it, and so the staff is recommending at this, recommending approval at this time. So the changes that they've requested, we provided each of you a copy before the meeting. I have gone over the requested changes, and it does not change the cost of the project, it simply clarifies the responsibilities of all parties. And staff is recommending approval.
Motion to approve.
Second. A motion, second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item 16, consideration possible action to approve revisions to the three-party interlocal agreement between the City of Harlingen, Harlingen Irrigation District Number 1, Cameron County Drainage District Number 5, collaborating in the project to approve the conveyance of stormwater along the 13th Street Drain. Same changes?
Same changes. Yes, sir.
Is there a motion to approve?
Sub move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item 17, consideration possible action to amend ordinance number 16-34. Exhibit A, school zone areas to add a school zone along Stewart Place Road and Business Highway 83 adjacent to Stewart Place Elementary School. And at Page 27, establishing a new school zone on South Palm Court Drive adjacent to the Jubilee Academy.
And I want to introduce Andy. Andy Zixto is our new city engineer, just started on Wednesday. So technically, he is our newest director, not Javier.
I'm the new guy.
What can we put him on?
Good evening, Mayor, Councilman, and City Manager.
So welcome home, Andy.
Thank you very much. I'm really glad to be here. So this item proposes to extend the school zone at Stewart Place Road, south of 83, approximately 525 feet. We will be installing a sign and a pole there, and in addition, we are proposing to create a new school zone for the Jubilee Academy there on South Palm, South Palm, South Palm Court Drive. Those, those particular traffic devices will be provided by the Jubilee Academy, and we will be installing them, we will be providing the labor. Staff recommends approval on this item. I'd be glad to answer.
I was going to ask, so, we're extending, this was before you got here, we're extending, maybe you're familiar with it, but we're extending the, if you go back to the... maybe you're familiar with it, but we're extending the, if you go back to the Stewart Place, we're extending the existing school zone to the south. Is that correct?
So, yeah, so currently, there's a school zone on Business 83.
Yes.
And we're now installing, placing a school zone on Stewart Place Road.
And I recollect a resident in the area sent us an email.
Yes.
And forwarded on, and this is reaction that says that citizens do contact us, and we do react in a positive way.
Absolutely. And we have our engineering staff confirm that, and validate that it is needed, and they did.
Okay. And so I want to thank you all for responding in that manner.
And of course, Jubilee, the new school, that does require a school flashing beacon because of the area proximity to the school.
And it has a curve.
And it does have a curve, yeah.
Okay. So is this an ordinance, amending an ordinance? So you need to read the caption, please.
An ordinance amending six, number 16-34, Exhibit A, school zone areas, Page 20, to add school zone along Stewart Place Road and Business 83 adjacent to Stewart Place Elementary, and the addition of Page 27, establishing a new school zone on South Palm Court Drive adjacent to Jubilee Academy regarding school zone speed limits and designating school zones, adopting Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Design Standards, establishing a 20 mile-per-hour speed limit in all school zones, establishing days and times of operations, and establishing a fine not to exceed $200 for violation of the provisions hereof, providing for publication and ordaining, ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like, sign. Motion carries. Thank you. We serve for...
I want to thank staff for taking care of that.
Board appointments, are there any board appointments?
I have none.
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 All right. Item 19, citizen communication, none. All right. Ladies and gentlemen, that concludes our meeting. We are adjourned. Thank you all.